The invocation, please. And then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Diana.
Amen. Let us pray. Gracious God our Father, we come humbly to you today, thanking you for the opportunity to serve you as we serve the people of our great city. We pray that you will continue to give us the strength to guide every decision, to guard the integrity of the offices that we have agreed to uphold, and to govern in a way that brings you glory and praise. We humbly ask that you will enable us to come today and to administer a business direction and plan that will affect positive changes to our city and to the residences that we serve. We pray that you would bless this agenda. We pray for your peace. We pray for your spirit of unity. We pray for spirit of healing as we deal with so many challenges and we deal with so many adversities. We pray, God, that you would bless each elected official individually. Individually bless their homes, individually bless their families. Then, God, we pray that you would bless them as they do the job that they have been elected to do and as they serve in the positions that they've agreed to serve in. I pray, God, that you would also bless our supporting organizations, that you would bless our police department, that you would bless our fire department, that you would bless our school system, that you would bless our business community, that you would bless our church community, and that you would bless the community at large. May we remain conscious of the fact that we are here not to be served, but we are here to serve. And so, God, we pray that our service will be done in such a way that will be the light that shines in darkness and we will be the change that brings about a unification that will serve as an example, not only to this city, but to our neighboring cities. Finally, God, we thank you because it is only because of you that we are able to do what we do. And we bless you as we serve you in integrity, as we serve in humility, and as we serve in responsibility, and finally, as we serve in love. Be with us this day, we pray. Amen.
Everybody, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where each is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we always do, we would like to honor our veterans that are here with us. Let's give them a round of applause. Mr. Myers, I didn't know you were a veteran, but thank you for serving. Oh, okay, you got up when we said that. We wish you good health, sir. All right, so we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Manning, Councilmember Ray English here, Mayor Pro Tem Montero, Mayor Vargas.
Here. Everybody is here. We have an item on the agenda. Councilmember Manning, can you just go ahead with yours, please?
I believe Kewana, if you can come up. So this is a presentation, an update on where we are with our Holly Park bathroom. We're getting a brand-new bathroom for Holly Park.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Kewana Bowie, the Deputy Director for the Community Services Department. Tonight, we have a brief presentation regarding the new restroom renovation at Holly Park. This project was made possible through a grant brought to the city of Hawthorne by Councilwoman Katrina Manning, who serves as Vice President of the Baldwin Hills and Urban Watershed Conservancy Board. I'd like to take a moment to introduce Jose Abara, our Grant and Plan Coordinator, and also Izelle Estrada, our Engineering Technician. Both work for the Public Works Department under the leadership of Akbar Faroki. They both played a key role in preparing this grant application and also assisting us with the design of the facility. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Jose and Izelle.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council and residents of Hawthorne. I'm gonna give a quick background on how we got the funding. So back in December of 2024, we applied for a grant with the Baldwin Hills and Urban Watershed Conservancy. And about around, I would say, January of 2025, they accepted us. They accepted it and awarded us a grant for $1 million. As you can see in this slide, just like anything in this world, with age, you need to upgrade some stuff, you know?
We know.
So with this grant, the funding will allow us to move forward with much-needed improvements. We're going to be more accessible, more environmentally efficient, and aligned with the needs of our community. But to go further in more details, my colleague Izelle will present what the future holds for this park.
Thank you, Jose. Good evening. My name is Izelle Estrada. I work for the Public Works Department, Engineering Division. As Jose mentioned, thanks to the grant the city received, we now have the opportunity to give Holly Park's restroom a much-needed upgrade. The image you see here is a rendering of the proposed design for the new building. The project involves completely demolishing the existing restroom and constructing a new multi-use facility. This new building will not only provide the community with restrooms, but it will also include a new drinking fountain, an office space, a storage room, an electrical room, and also a snack bar. We will also be relocating the existing flagpole to a more suitable location. Here we have the proposed floor plan to help you better visualize the facility. In addition to the new features, we will also enhance the surrounding landscape with drought-tolerant and California-native plants like the ones shown. This project will be going out to bid tonight. We anticipate receiving bids by October 28th and plan to award the project by December 9th. Our projected construction timeline begins in January of next year and is expected to be completed by June 2026, just in time for the Summer Parks Program. Thank you for your time and attention. Any questions?
To the Chair. I wanted to find out during construction, will there be temporary bathrooms? Or where would people be able to use the bathroom? Or will the park be closed?
There is another onsite location for restroom that the community will be able to use.
Okay. Well, we have signage letting them know that that bathroom is closed and where to go for the other bathroom.
Yes. We'll make sure that the community knows exactly where to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you to the Chair. Great presentation. Thank you both. I'm very excited and to Councilmember Manning for bringing this forth some time ago. However, we're on the start of this great project and to be able to acquire a million is something totally amazing and very proud of. So to all who took part, congratulations and kudos. And especially to the Holly Park residents who are going to be enjoying this park and the many other families that visit and play. And we used to have picnics at the park, and I remember. And just to see what the rendering looks like, totally different, and I like that. It reminds me of a National Park-themed type of restroom. That's one that is inclusive and especially in traveling back and forth to Vegas. This is exactly what the vision was and it's great to see exactly what it's going to look like. Congratulations and to the architect who designed it. Perfect. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
How long is it going to be taking place? So tear-down to opening?
So we plan on starting January and being done by June.
Oh, that's pretty quick. So I think that's a quick turnaround. I think people could make that small effort to go to the other bathroom. Or if need be, we could make some type of accommodation, but only if we figure out that we need to, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your efforts, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
All right, so that was the presentation. Oral Communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Hello. The first one we have is Pat Donaldson.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and everyone else in the audience. Patricia Donaldson, President/CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. First of all, before I even start, I want to say that a little over two years ago, I had a very bad accident with the COVID shot. And because of that COVID shot, I was paralyzed from the neck down in a coma for three months on life support, code blued twice. But I thank you for all your prayers and everyone that came to see me at the hospital. I don't remember anyone coming, but they said everyone came and I want to thank everyone for that. Thank God that I'm still here. So now, now for my announcements. September 29th, we're having our golf tournament, our 11th Annual Golf Tournament. And there'll be one of the prizes, door prizes, will be a weekend in San Francisco at the Marriott Hotel. Mayor Alex Varg-- I mean, Pro Tem Mayor wants that. We'll do our best to pick you out of the hat. Other door prizes will be the Ayers Hotel, a weekend at the Ayers, any Ayers Hotel. There'll be a hole-in-one. Someone gets a hole-in-one, they get a 2026 Ford Mustang. And no one's gotten a hole-in-one yet, so maybe this time there will be. And there'll be a lot of door prizes, 50/50 in Mulligans. Now, there'll be a breakfast at 9:00 a.m. There'll be lunch at noon, which will be hot dogs and hamburgers, chips, and all that kind of stuff. And there'll be a beautiful buffet dinner at 5:30. So I really hope that all of you can make it. It's going to be better than it's ever been. Now, I have two new chamber members that I'd like to introduce one at a time. I'll introduce Michael, who came first. Come on up, Mount Michael Diaz, and he'll tell you about himself, and then I'll introduce the next one.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Diaz. I'm the owner of Magamize Detail. We specialize in premium auto detailing that brings your car back to life inside and out, from deep interior cleans to paint corrections and ceramic coatings. We treat every vehicle like your own. Quality care and attention to detail, that's what we deliver every time. Book your first detail and see the difference. Thank you. We're located a mile and a half away from the LAX Airport.
LAX, okay.
And then a mile and a half away from the SoFi Stadium.
Oh, okay.
What streets are these?
Century and Inglewood.
Okay.
Yes, but I'm fully mobile, so I can come to you anywhere you guys are located too. And we provide our own water and electricity.
That's the way to promote. I was waiting for you to say something like that. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And now I have Deanna Gerald. Want to come on up? And she's a new member. She just became a member last week.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Deanna Gerald, and I'm a Certified Artificial Intelligence Consultant. And I help businesses to harness-- I'm short, sorry. My name is Deanna Gerald, and I'm a Certified Artificial Intelligence Consultant. And I help businesses to harness the power of AI through workflows and training, helping them to scale, save time, and save money through the power of automation. And the name of my company is called Design AI Futures. Thank you for having me.
Congratulations.
Where are you located?
I'm actually online. I'm able to come to you or anyone else.
Thank you, ma'am.
A micro-business.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's give these two new businesses a round of applause and welcome into our city. Victor Vasquez, Rancho Cucamonga. Come on up, sir.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm Victor Vasquez from Rancho Cucamonga. I want to bring into attention an incident that occurred to me in October 2022, if I may. I witnessed a Hawthorne police officer verbally abusing a mentally-challenged homeless man who had blood all over his face, although I do not know how he got bloody. That part I did not see. He was using obscene language. He was calling him a piece of bleep, B-I-C-T-H, every word in the book, okay? This man seemed to be borderline Down Syndrome. You could see he did not know what was going on. He just sat there crying as a cop abused him verbally. So I called the cop out on what he was doing. He knew someone was watching him, and he kind of backed off, right, and his partner. Okay, forward to 2023, I filed a complaint with Hawthorne Police Department. As the months went by, I heard nothing every time I called to see what was going on with my complaint. Elliot Internal Affairs would-- Actually, I never got him. I just got his voicemail. He never called me back. I left tons-- I mean, we're talking almost a whole year later. Forward to the summer of '24, I finally got ahold of Elliot Internal Affairs and asked him why he hadn't investigated my complaint. He said the complaints were backed up. This is a year and a half later now, okay? He said he looked into it, and at that time, he did verify that the mentally-- I mean, that the police officer that I seen verbally abusing the mentally-challenged man was indeed a Hawthorne police officer. And this is last summer, okay? Now, forward to April of '25, I'm still sending him emails, leaving calls, you know, his voicemail. I never got anything back. So I decided to contact the Chief of Police, Gary-- I hope I'm pronouncing it right, Tom Matani. I had no access, reaching him by phone, so I wrote him a complaint letter, letting him know everything that was going on, that his officer was abusing a homeless mentally-challenged man, and that Elliot Internal Affairs had did nothing to investigate the matter. And this was in April. I've heard nothing since then. I haven't got the letters saying that they were going to look into it or anything like that, that he received my letter, nothing. So then I kind of figured out why Elliot hadn't investigated it because if the Chief of Police is not doing anything about it, it is coming straight from the top down, you know what I mean? So they ain't doing nothing. So he just doesn't want to be held accountable for his officers abusing, like I said, the mentally ill. Obviously, he's trying to sweep it under the rug. Okay, so now I'm letting you guys know I'm going to file a complaint with Rob Bonta, the California District Attorney, or Attorney General, and the DA Nathan Hockman, Public Integrity Unit, of the Public Integrity Unit. And I just can't believe that the city of Hawthorne allows their officers-- I'm not saying all of them, but the ones that I did see and the other ones who covered it up, they allowed them to abuse the mentally handicapped and disabled. You swore no to protect the weak, but instead you violate the weak. So I'm done, and I want you guys to know that I have the copy of the letter I sent to the Chief of Police right here. So worship the Lord.
But sir, you do understand you're in the city of Hawthorne, and you're talking to LA Internal Affairs, Los Angeles Internal Affairs.
Well, I was told by a cop friend of mine to--
Unfortunately, there's a big discrepancy in a lot of things you're saying, sir, so--
Well, still, what happened, what I seen happen, and what didn't get investigated, that did happen here.
But you're making threats and claims against the city that you're going to proceed with something.
Well, I am, I am.
Okay, that's it, though. We'll address it. No, sir, but I just think that LA is LA City over there. We're Hawthorne. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, if you want to leave the cop-- Okay, if you want to leave the copies, sir? I'll take the copies. City Clerk, can you get the copies for me, please?
Yeah, just trying to brush it under the rug.
No, thank you, thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely, we agree with you, but-- let's see-- Norm Haney.
Honorable council members, my name's Norm Haney. My background is civil engineering and land development. Recently, the court labeled me as the neutral between the city's dispute with the people that own the Hawthorne Mall. So my job is to find a solution to that eyesore that you've been looking at for the past 25 years. And the only way that I can do that is by working with the city, understanding their goals and objectives, and trying to make sure that the future development of that property is consistent with those goals and objectives. It really is that simple. I look forward to working with the Planning Director, with the City Planning Department, Planning Commission, and of course, ultimately with you as the City Council members. I've had the opportunity to review each of your backgrounds and I'm incredibly impressed. Each of you have accomplished a tremendous amount in your life and the City of Hawthorne is lucky to have you as council members. So I'm going to leave some cards here and you feel free to call me, ask me any questions that you want to ask, and I am open to answer those questions to the best of my ability. As a neutral, it's very important that we try and find a use for that property that benefits the property owners, but also meets the goals and objectives of the City of Hawthorne. And I just wanted to take the time to introduce myself. I've met with your city attorney. I'm very impressed with his background and his qualifications and I'm sure we can find a solution. So thank you very much for your time.
Through the chair, can I make a brief statement? I just want to warn Mr. Haney and the City Council about contacting and discussing this matter with three councils. So if it goes beyond two council members, it would be violation of the Brown Act. So just want you to bear in mind that.
Sir, I don't know why you're coming here and not just letting the, taking the avenue that you would go through administration. Trying to-- no, no response. This is just a one-way comment. Trying to make a point here is definitely trying to make a political lobby here for some cause. I don't think you're that neutral as you may seem. So I would like to discuss with our administration your role in all this, okay? Thank you.
I think you'll find that that's not correct.
Yeah, but coming up to a City Council meeting and not letting the avenues that are laid out for you to be getting involved, not letting that take place, I'm concerned with that.
Would you have a meeting Friday with the staff and Mr. Haney?
Alright.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Alright. The next person, do we have anybody else who would like to address the City Council? It's open mic, go ahead.
Hey, everyone. Hey, City Council. Some of you are familiar with myself and some of my colleagues. For those who aren't, my name is Hansel from Good Neighbors United. We've been here multiple times. Last month, there was quite a few meetings that were canceled and that was unfortunate because we didn't want to follow up. But I guess to recap people on what we've been doing, we were able to reach a compromise with the city where we felt that the city made a proper statement regarding the raids, number one. And number two, we reached another compromise where Hawthorne PD agreed to investigate every detainment that were to happen in the city. Thankfully, we haven't seen another one. We have seen nice presence here and there, but not as much as they feared and for that, you know, I'm glad. However, we're still, we're still busy, I mean, we're still here in the community doing good work. We've done backpack giveaways, we've done art shows to collect funds for families affected by the raids, to help street vendors as well. We've done quite a few things. Now, the next focus is to bring back the food program. I know that, I want to say in June, one of my colleagues brought this up and I know she spoke to Ms. Deanna, who is not here unfortunately, or yeah, she's not here unfortunately, City Clerk. Dana, I'm so sorry. Yeah, sorry about that, Ms. Dana. And essentially, the reason why the food program was stopped, it wasn't because the raids and people were afraid to come out, as they said, in a City Council meeting back in June, but it was because she just didn't have the support. And I'm not here to make enemies, but I am here to get work done. So I'm not here to call anybody out, but we can bring this food program back. We have more than enough people that would be willing to volunteer at least twice a month. I know several people personally that were benefiting from this program and I don't see why not put the effort to do so. I'm not saying that you guys aren't-- well, I am saying you guys haven't been, but yeah, we want to aid with that. So if you guys want to get started, you know, hit me up. Vargas, you have my email if you need it again, you may have it again. Any one of you who needs my information, I'm more than willing to accept it. I know you guys would like the good PR, but ideally, I would like you guys to, you know, make an effort to help Dana with the food program. That's all I have to say and yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Ruben, the North Hawthorne Community Association. Wanted to speak to, well, I have a lot of things to talk about, in regards of some concerns from the residents in the past summer. Across the street from 12722 Cedar Avenue, the old AT&amp;T Building has a lot of debris, a lot of trees. I think city employees have been trying to work and clean it up, but it gets very dirty. A lot of the resident there are complaining because all the debris, all the leaves are flying everywhere. If that can be addressed, really appreciate it. The other thing would be, you also met with a lot of residents around the RFK Building. They're very concerned in regards of blight, a lot of the trash is around the RFK Building. I know they cleaned up after some complaints, but they're very concerned in regards of the barbed wire. For some reason, they have a lot of barbed wire around and the residents are very concerned because that lowers a lot of property value in that area. Some of them are already calling it Hawthorne's Alligator Alcatraz, because that's what you have all the way, you got all barbed wire. So if that can be addressed or just speak a little bit more about it, please contact us so we can, you can meet with some of the residents as well. Also, wanted to talk, touch a little bit on about the Hawthorne Mall. Robert Kim, he did a great job and I know you guys spearheaded a lot of this with getting to the place where we're at. You too, Mr. Von Norris, thank you so much. I know you have a team of attorneys who is working behind this. We call them the dream team. They work very hard, they deserve all the praise because nothing would have been moved forward if it weren't for this team. Alright, so that's something that we needed to speak to and give at least our thanks a lot. And I'm sorry, I'm going real quick because I only get a couple of minutes. Regards of the homeless, every time when I'm-- it's kind of funny because a lot of the residents have already called and kind of let me know what's going on with the homeless around the areas, but they noticed one thing. I don't know if some-- I believe it's Sergeant or Officer Espinosa handled some of the homeless situations. He's very caring. He's been out there, we noticed just in his body language, the way he speaks to-- and this is early in the morning and I've gotten to witness myself, the way he's speaking to some of them, making sure that they're being taken care of, the way he's talking to them and the way that he addresses them is very respectful. This is something that I know that has been going on now. I know there's a group now of officers that do this and I hope they can continue with this because it's working. Yeah, we have some lingering around CVS and I know you guys probably know about it. I think the officers know about that very much and that should be also talked about and maybe patrolling a little bit more. Also, in regards of free food, that is something that a lot of these residents, especially in the north side of Hawthorne, do not want. There's a lot of churches, as you already know. There's a lot of places, we have parks that give out free food. And to add more and more and more, that's just from the homeowner's perspective, it lowers property values. For those of you that own homes, understand that. For those of you that don't, probably need to be taught a little bit more about property values. Okay, so I hope that can be addressed. Thank you.
Next person?
Everybody, good evening. How are we doing? First of all, I just wanted to say a big thank you to Mr. Montero. I hope I'm pronouncing your name fully correctly. You stepped up this past summer. I know we're kind of transitioning between summer and fall. Thank you. You stepped up in a big way. Thank you for supporting our street vendors. Appreciate you. I know that we're not supposed to sort of single anybody out, but on the July 5th meeting, there was a pretty inappropriate comment from one of our City Council members, Ms. Johnson, towards some of our members of Good Neighbors United for not standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, as is their First Amendment right, right? So thank you for actively encouraging people not to use their First Amendment right. Very inappropriate. Beyond that-- I don't know how everybody voted in this room in the last presidential election, but yesterday, the Supreme Court said Fourth Amendment, gone. Fifth Amendment, gone. If you voted for that pedophile in the White House, shame on you because he is destroying this country and you don't know what that flag stands for. And I'm standing here in a Mexico jersey, not because I want the downfall of the United States, but because I want my country to be a place where we can't go, that person looks like they might be illegal because they're speaking Spanish or they look a little Hispanic. I'm going to stop them and I'm going to tell them, they need to prove to me that they're a US citizen or a documented person. That goes completely against the Fourth and Fifth Amendments. Shame on all Trump supporters.
Alright, anybody else wishing to address the council? Okay, we have one more person.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Anna Suarez from Good Neighbors United. I also wanted to thank Alex Montero for your help. We have been helping local street vendors and family impacted by the raids and Alex Montero stepped up and thanks to him, I was able to call one of my vendors and tell her, just go home, stay safe. So I really appreciate your help. Thank you. I'm going to speak in my native tongue because I'm trying to reach a community. Sé que seguimos pasando en tiempos difíciles. Estamos viviendo en historia repetida donde la gente es discriminada por hablar español. Que ironía, verdad? Estas experiencias no son nada nuevas para nosotros, pero recuerden que el pueblo unido jamás será vencido. Estamos con ustedes y seguiremos apoyando y luchando por nuestros derechos. Nuestro grupo se llama Good Neighbors United, que significa buenos vecinos unidos. Si necesitan comida para su familia, por favor contáctense con nosotros. Mi nombre es Anna Suarez. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, anybody else? Anyone else? Okay, if not, oral communications, close order. City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have seven items on the consent calendar. They are Items 2 through 8 for your consideration and approval. Item 2, the City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item 3, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025's agenda. Item 4, Resolution Number 8552, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving the filing of an application for grant funds from the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District for Measure 8 funding for the Hawthorne Civic Center Park and Water Tower Park Development. Item 5, Resolution Number 8554, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the destruction of various finance department records pursuant to Resolution Number 7170 and Government Code Section 34090. Item 6, Resolution Number 8555, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing an on-street handicap parking space at 13335 Hawthorne Boulevard. Item 7, Resolution Number 8556, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming September 15th, 2025 through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Hawthorne, California. Item 8, Resolution Number 8557, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing approving and ratifying acceptance of the Grant Year 2024 Urban Area Security Initiative, UASI, totaling $117,640 for the purchase of automated license plate readers, ALPRS, for adoption.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, everyone, please vote.
Okay, the votes are in. The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Ordinances, please.
Item 9. Ordinance Number 2258, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending Section 2.06.020, Meetings of Chapter 2.06, City Council of Title II, Administration, Civil Service, and Personnel of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and Making a Finding of Exemption in Compliance with SEQA in Connection therewith for introduction.
I'll introduce.
Thank you. It's been introduced formally. There's no bid openings at this time and there's also no public hearings at this time as there are no general matters also at this time. Let's go ahead and move on to the City Manager's calendar. Madam Clerk, can you read Items 10 through 14, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10, Fiscal Year 2025-26 Blanket Purchase Orders. Item 11, Holly Park Restroom-- resin-- red and-- sorry. Renovation Project Number 25-07 out to bid. Item 12, Receive and File Housing Authority Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2024-25. Item 13, Agreement Between the City of Hawthorne and the City of Hermosa Beach for the Purpose of Developing a Co-Response Model Under the Hawthorne Police Department's Special Weapon and Tactics Team, SWAT. Item 14, Progress Payment Number 7 in the Amount of $639,660.15 due to PCN3 Inc. of Los Alamitos, California, for City of Hawthorne New Senior Center, Project Number 24-03. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve Items 10 through 14?
I move.
Second.
Please vote. Actually, it's that, it's reset if you can.
There. You saw how many times I pounded on it, right? Okay. That was a yes, thank you.
And the votes are in. The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Thank you, guys. City Attorney's Calendar.
Item 15, Claim for Damages by Kristi Stewart, Recommended Motion. Staff recommends that the City Council deny the claim by Kristi M. Stewart.
I'll move. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilwoman Angie Raising English. Angie, again, one more time.
Ooh.
Soft, soft touch?
I did, did you see? Softly, softly, there.
And the votes are in. The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Okay, let's take a quick look. We have three action items. Councilwoman Angie Raising-- well, did I miss something? Okay. Councilwoman Angie Raising, can you go ahead with your emergency preparedness, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to--
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make mention and to bring to everyone's attention that the month of September is considered Emergency Preparedness Month. It's usually recognized at the end of the month, in September. However, it's basically National Emergency Preparedness to recognize across the country. The goal is to raise awareness and to ensure that our community is ready in case there is a disaster, along with FEMA, you know, using their campaign resources to make everyone aware and to bring to the community's attention how they could make their plan work for them is by creating a plan, build a kit, stay informed, and get involved as a volunteer. Myself, for a long time, you know, almost seven years, City of Los Angeles Crisis Response Team member, I was glad that I was able to assist in that and get trained and well-versed. And I'm very supportive of our CERT program. I'm very supportive of anything having to do with first responders, emergency response, anything having to do with our police. So, it's something very important that many residents here in the City of Hawthorne could take leadership roles and make a plan and do something like that for your family to assure that you'll be safe should anything happen, because it will take a while before any help can get to you. So, just FYI, this month is National Emergency Preparedness Month, and I want to recognize that here in the City of Hawthorne. Thank you. If I could make a motion?
Second.
Thank you. I make the motion second by the mayor.
And could you just restate the exact motion, just so we all?
It's- September's considered National Emergency Preparedness Month, and so we're recognizing that in the City of Hawthorne as well.
Okay, got it. Second ticket.
Thank you.
Please vote, guys. Or I guess in next, we could just do consensus later. Let's just vote now.
Okay, the votes are in. The vote reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Angie Reyes English, you have a additional item?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The annual Operation Gobble and Toy giveaway in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce. It's my understanding that the Chamber of Commerce is helping us in these efforts. So, moving forward, I want to make sure that I'm in full agreement to do that, along with the Chamber, for the month of November and December. And I did mention initially at City Hall, but I think because of the response that we might get from the community, that it's better that we use the Memorial Center. So, Vaughn, if you could help in those efforts to assure that we have the Memorial Center available for the November Toy Operation Gobble. And we're gonna select a date. Usually, I try to do it before Thanksgiving, so that, you know, folks that want to get away and things like this are not interrupted, because there's gonna be a giveaway, obviously. So, we need to come to a date that would be comparable for all. And Thanksgiving falls, it's the 28th, right? Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving? Oh, the 27th. Okay, so that falls on a Thursday. But if we could make it maybe the week of the 17th, Vaughn.
Is that something you want me to put in the calendar or share with the Chamber?
Yeah, we're gonna- with the Chamber and- No, well, normally, normally for myself, like I said, we do it like the week of the 17th, so like the 20th or the 21st, because the following week is Thanksgiving, and usually folks-
I have a couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so when was the relationship between? It's good, but I just, when did we establish this connection to be able to do this turkey giveaway? At what point?
That was discussed earlier this year. We sat here and talked about-
No, but, but I'm just saying, so I remember there were multiple, wasn't there more than one turkey giveaways? Does this kind of consolidate the efforts?
That's what we're trying to do.
I just wanted to remember.
Yeah, it's a consolidation, so that we're not making duplicate efforts. Correct.
And to the Chair, actually, Vaughn, it would be at the Bedding Endsworth Parking Lot, not the Memorial Center.
I understand that, but I'm concerned about the date. Are we moving forward the 17th? I heard Pat Donaldson from the Chamber say that's too soon, so-
How about we talk? We'll talk, Pat, and we'll come up with the date. And December, yeah.
Do we have another meeting that we have, can afford to make a decision at that point, or should we, do we need to make it now?
Oh, I think we know what, we're working together, and I know that we need, we've already secured the location. I don't think a date is too much a-
Alright, so we established that it's good? Just come up with the date that's appropriate?
We'll work together to make sure.
Everybody's in agreement here?
Right.
Okay.
And the same for the toy giveaway. I know that we had mentioned in the past, it's been here, but I think it needs to be there, too. Yeah, for both, Pat.
Another quick question? So, the, I mean, without disclosing anything, is it the same source, the turkey and the supplies and the donations? Is it the same supplies that she has, or is it just a combined one, or?
We'll give the turkeys away.
All the donations?
It's all, it's all being collected together. It's a collaborated effort with the Chamber.
So, whoever she had, she's combining with whoever you used to.
Yeah, exactly.
It should actually be-
Everybody's gonna get something. It's gonna be bigger. Yep.
Thank you, for sure.
Thank you.
Item, you good?
Yeah, we, do we need to vote on that? Make a motion second?
Consensus.
Okay, great. Great, thank you.
Okay. The CERT meet and greet?
Yeah.
Training for, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. So, Mr. English, up in the Attorney's Office, works collectively with the CERT program. So, last year, we had a meet and greet. We've had meet and greet in previous years. So, we're coordinating a meet and greet in January for 2026 for community volunteers to join CERT, and that's gonna be at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. Vaughn, sometime in January, working along with Mr. English.
To my knowledge, the date's been set, maybe Quanabu, if you can remember if Sam English has contacted you and if you reserved a date for this event?
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that the community is aware that we're planning a community meet and greet, and for them to look for that.
Yes, so I did speak with Sam English, and we did schedule a date. However, I don't recall that date at this moment.
Okay.
Thank you. So, tomorrow, I'll share that date. I'll put an email out to Council, and we'll start publicizing this event to the public.
Okay, thank you, Vaughn, for your help with that. And I think we're good with that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Robert, okay.
And I am, too.
To the Chair. Can I participate? Like, I want to get the CERT certificate.
The certificates for CERT? So, what happened this year, we had a CERT class that graduated. We had like three days, eight hours apiece for three days, even the weekend. So, I think it went Friday, Saturday, Sunday, eight hours of CERT training. We had a lot of participants from neighboring cities, from Gardena, Lawndale, and so we're like the lead. Gardena's somewhat the lead, but we're hosting and working collectively. They were supposed to come to our council to be given their CERTs, but the meet and greet is the lead way to the training.
Okay.
So, we're gonna have a meet and greet, and anybody could come to the meet and greet. Everybody's welcomed. And then, from the meet and greet, LA County Fire sets the dates and times for the next training. And then, after that training is finished with, we coordinate the certificates of recognition for all those that participated and completed all of those days.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. So, everybody's welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah, I recently just watched a movie, and I think it was The War. I can't remember exactly Brad Pitt was in the movie, but I just remember freaking completely out about what if we have an earthquake? What are we gonna do? How are we gonna be prepared? Because I feel like when you do have an earthquake, or you have a national disaster, you're so stressed out, so much going on, that you don't necessarily think about protocol until it actually happens. So, I'm just glad to know that we are prepared, and I just want to be mindful of making sure that I know what to do immediately for not only my family, but for my, my street, my block, because a lot of folks come to my house. If there's something going on, they'll come to my house. In particular, so I just want to make sure that I am prepared, and I know exactly what to do. So, thank you so much for bringing this up.
Yeah, you're welcome. Mayor?
To the Chair. Just real quick, for the CERT class, this past year, I was able to take, they do module classes now, prior to the, so that they could, I guess it was hard to do those three days in a row. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to do the other day that was required, so hopefully, I'll be able to get in this time. But the, but the modules that you do online were just phenomenal. They were good. Good training.
Oh, yeah. I mean, and the volunteers that are on a part of CERT, they are serious about what they do.
Awesome.
They're serious.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so let me-
Okay.
You're good?
Mayor?
Yeah, so I really appreciate you bringing this up, and it kind of goes hand in hand with a conference I'll be going to on September, the last, in the third week of September. Yeah, you know exactly which one. It'll be in El Paso.
Yeah.
And why El Paso? I mean, that's probably like an epicenter of a lot of different disasters that take place in that part of country, flooding. You know, we got the, we have the earthquakes, you know, right there, they have the floods, right? You know, the southern Panhandle, Florida, they have like the hurricanes and other issues. So, every area just has thunderstorms, like tornadoes in the middle. Every single area has its own different thing, so it's a collective of elected officials. The National Association of Latino Elected Officials, I got a scholarship to attend, so on emergency preparedness. So, whatever information I have, I will bring forth. But I already, guys, I already know what's gonna be the top, you already know where I'm going with this. You already know what the topic, she knows what the topic, the main thing that they're gonna- Make sure you have your emergency preparedness plan either created or updated with the proper people that are gonna be responsible for every different thing, so. I think we've done a lot of the hard work, right? But it'd be just good to take a look to make sure that it's updated, and Chief, quick question? About the emergency preparedness plan and whoever's leading that, if you guys have already kind of had a little workshop, or the City Manager, I don't know?
That would be under my authority.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
With that being said, we're currently looking at our plan, updating it. We plan to insert trainings for staff, and once the new City Hall is built, we will have designated areas that will be prepared for any type of emergency. So, staff is in constant communication, excuse me, communication with the Police Department, and we're prepared. And as different disasters arise in different regions of the world, we're paying attention to that and updating our plan as is.
It sounds good. So, like, we have this thing that came up with our Councilwoman colleague who brought this up. I'm going to this conference. You guys are already working on something, so I think everything's meeting at a point where we can talk about-
Mr. Mayor, we can bring something back at the beginning of the year with updates.
That would be great.
Councilwoman Angie has been a spearhead with this, consecutively, consistently, working with city staff. We are currently recruiting for that position, too, looking for someone to come in to help with the team in getting ready for a disaster. So, this is a formal invite. If there's anyone available with that experience, please look at our website. And I would recommend that we bring something back at the start of the year as a kickoff of what the city's doing to be prepared.
I guess whenever you're ready and have everything that, most everything, I mean, that's a good target, but if you need to move that date around, no?
Yeah, no, everything is good. As you could see, there's interest here. Everyone's contributing, so making suggestions. All of that is important. What's really important is showing up and getting the training that you need, so that you could help your neighbors. And oftentimes, you know, that's a challenge. The more volunteers we have, the better we're equipped to assist our police, because at the end of the day, our police are gonna have other priorities, and those that are on the ground as volunteers assisting neighbors are gonna make a difference. My daughter was in the Katrina, New Orleans disaster. I couldn't find her for three days, as you can imagine. I had just dropped her off at college and came home, and then, you know, here's this Katrina. And I don't know if you've seen it. It's on Netflix right now. It's showing Katrina, which I can't even look at it, because it brought back a lot of memories. There weren't pleasant memories, and I'm not trying to scare folks, but at the end of the day, we want to be prepared, and that's the headline, preparedness, to be prepared. And you start, but you're just making sure you have a full tank of gas all the time, making sure that you have a plastic container with perishables, things that you're gonna need, toller trees, a change of clothes, some shoes, because the last thing you want to do is be running in the dark, and you have no shoes on. So, keep things at your bedside, whether it's a sweater, a coat, a flashlight, a radio. All of this is important. So, I thank everyone's interest and support in making sure that our City of Hawthorne is readily prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for bringing this up. It's gonna be, we're gonna have, we try to get prepared as soon as possible. We are, we've been, we have everything in place, right? But we just want to keep fine-
Yep.
Fine-tuning it even more and more, right? You good, guys? Alright, so elected of, well, no, 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 no. How could I skip that one? Sorry, guys. Don't get mad at me. Alright, go ahead.
As you can tell, I had a few things on my mind. So, Item 19 is to discuss the Holiday City Hall Closure, and this is in the December-January months. This has been a tradition, that we provide our employees a rest period, which is during the holidays. And it's good to put that out now, so that folks are aware what days they're gonna take, et cetera, and make their travel plans. We're very thankful for our workforce, for what they do across the board in all departments. And I just want to assure that they have a rest period that brings them back refreshed and ready to go in 2026. Having said that, there's a couple of options. There's a closure between December 22nd, you might want to write this down, December 22nd to January 2nd. Again, December 22nd through January 2nd, the employees will use their time for all days deemed not holidays. Option B would be work December 22nd and December 23rd, and close through January 2nd. Again, employee would use their time for the December 29th, 30th, and January 2nd. So, I have, I have a preference myself. However, collectively, I want to make sure that the Council is chiming in and providing support to our departments and our workforce. I kind of prefer Option A. Here, I'll give you this. Here you go. You can take a look at that. Again, this is just to provide, to provide us a guideline of City Hall Closure. And again, it's the end of the year, the season, and gives opportunities for employees to know exactly when we're gonna be open and when we're not. Very important, again, to support our workforce.
To the Chair. I know in the last, I guess, two years, I had suggested this, and so I wanted to refer to our City Manager to see what option works better. And that would be the option that I would support.
Yeah, this is, this was provided by our City Manager-
Okay.
And Human Resources. And so, yeah, again, I just want to make sure everybody-
I'm okay with both.
With either one?
Yeah.
How about, how about, how about one? How about Option A? Johnson?
Vaughn, do you have a preference, A or B?
No, I truly don't. If the decision's not made, what we can do, I did share some options with Councilwoman Reyes English, as this is her discussion action item. If time is allowed at the next council meeting, myself and HR can bring back a small presentation with the two options, and can provide a workaround for both options of City Hall being closed if a decision's not needed to be made tonight.
I was just gonna say, could we ask HR to come up, and let's just get this off the, off the calendar today?
Absolutely.
Make it tonight?
A quick comment before we shoot starts? I do want to address the, obviously, but, I mean, this, I mean, not only HR, but obviously, to the feedback of our City Manager, planning and building, and all those, all those offices where people come and try to get services. You guys know, you guys are the, actually, the ones who could help us make that decision, where we can quote-unquote "afford" to not have that City Hall open. There's just some hotspots, right, where people come in. Do people come in at the, at the end of the year? They just plainly don't. They start coming in like on January 1st, or, I mean, you know, that's kind of-
Well, not, I'm not, I'm not laughing at you, what I'm, okay, this isn't, this isn't new to the Council. I mean-
No, it isn't, but the thing is.
We've done this before. This isn't like surprise.
This is my third year doing it.
We've been, we've done this previously.
I'm not saying not to do it, but you gave us two choices.
No, no, but, but, you know, that's, that's what was provided. We were doing this in advance, so that we- We were doing this in advance so that we could let the community know that these are the dates that our offices will be closed. The last thing we wanna do is to do it last minute. And so that's why it's, you know, the month of September to bring awareness that our workforce will be taking a break during the holiday.
To the chair.
Yeah, let's give them a chance.
All right. Thank you. So I was looking at the dates, actually. So it, it, the, because the only day that's gonna be impacted literally is on the twenty second, twenty third, and then the twenty ninth, the thirtieth, and the thirty first. So we're talking about one, two, three, four, twenty five days that impact if we choose option A, right? Now, the only thing that I would recommend, if we choose option A, is probably to give a grace period for the business license that it's due on December thirty first. Is to give them a grace period maybe to go to January tenth to pay their proper, their license, right? Because usually by December thirty first, they have to pay the business license. And a lot of them, I believe, come before December thirty first to pay their business license. So if we close, I would suggest maybe to give a period of the business license, extend the business license due date to say January tenth or January fifteen.
To the chair. I have Erica, she was gonna share with us the, the date option, which would be better.
Thank you. So the negotiated holidays are December twenty fourth, December twenty fifth, December thirty first, and January first. Those are the negotiated holidays. December twenty sixth is a nine eighty. That Friday, we would already be closed. January second, the other Friday, is a day that staff would have to use their time.
Right, one day.
Go ahead.
To the chair.
Johnson, yes. Councilwoman.
I, I personally would like to hear what the, the directors and the city manager has to say because I know that the work is not gonna stop. It's actually gonna pile up. And I'm, I'm concerned about so much time of being closed. But I'm open to hearing from you guys to tell us. You run the show, so we need to hear it from you.
This was a council item. As the city manager, I'm gonna follow the direction of city council. But I will say this, with any days that are off, we will make modifications and the work will get done. The work is not gonna stop. So if we're closed one or two days, the work will still get done. So depending on what council directs, myself with staff help, we will get the work done. So either option will not deplete the work, we'll just make modifications to get the work done. So I would ask council to make direction and not leave this direction up to staff as staff provided two options to make a decision.
A.
Well, let me, let me just make a quick comment. I'm good with either one of these. I think it's a fine tuned decision between both of them. Through my work here and consulting and everything else I've seen, developers, people aren't walking in in droves during that period of time. Let's just call it for what it is. So I understand and valid concerns, everybody here's concerns are valid. So it's something that we, that will not impact us. We're not gonna lose business because we shut down. We're not gonna do, we're not gonna lose progress because, you know, people are using their own time anyways.
Yeah, most people.
To be able to take a vacation.
Mr. Mayor, we operated during COVID for two years almost, and the work did not stop. So we can work under any condition here to get the work done.
Oh, no, no, but, yeah, but you understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
That, that it's kind of, the activity level drops during that time. Inevitably, everybody's already taking off.
So I'm gonna make the motion.
Well, how many times, how many times have we called some of these people that we wanted to work with, some, you know, consultants, developers, or lawyers because we had a case or some type of thing that going on, you know, planning commission meetings or whatever, like the count on develop, lawyers? Oh, sorry, we gotta reschedule, right? Because they're gonna be off for the vacation, so we gotta. Go ahead.
Right.
Oh, I was just gonna make the motion to accept.
It's true.
That's true.
Option one.
That's true.
Second, option A.
I defer to council, it's fine.
I'm good.
I'll concur.
I'm good.
Do we need a?
Okay. So there's a motion or there's a consensus?
Option A.
To the chair? A, A.
Go ahead, Johnson, Councilwoman.
I'm good, A is good.
Okay.
But I do have another issue along the same lines as holidays and closing. Our November, our first meeting in November, Veterans Day falls on our first meeting in November. And so according to the, the municipal code, we're supposed to meet on Wednesday. Veterans Day falls on eleven eleven, eleven eleven is our council meeting.
Yeah, on the sec, on the Tuesday.
Yes.
Yeah, that's November eleven.
So are we, I know we're gonna be closed that day, so we're not having our meeting that day. Are we meeting in accordance with our code? Are we gonna meet on Wednesday?
That's correct. The, the code says a regular meeting will fall on the following day.
Okay.
On the twelfth, okay, so we need to make sure we get that out to the residents also.
November first?
No, November twelve.
Eleven eleven.
Could you, could the?
It's like, like, this is Tuesday.
We can't hear you, Vargas. I mean, I'm sorry, Montero.
It's my understanding is because sometime, even the eleven is a Veterans Day, most, for example, the school's gonna be closed on Monday, the tenth, instead of the eleven. Because they wanna go, they're gonna do Monday holiday. So I'm not sure if city hall, even, I don't know if, if, because I don't remember.
Also on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, the eleven? Okay.
So that means the council would, would, would have a regular council meeting on the twelfth.
That's correct, at six o'clock.
I'd just like a request by council colleagues, if you guys could grant me the opportunity, or, I'm sorry, the opportunity to have it on the Thursday?
Oh, you want it on a Thursday?
Good.
Oh, thirteenth? The thirteenth?
No, the, the regular meeting under the code falls on the following day after the holiday. So it will be a Wednesday.
Municipal code.
So it's already set in stone, so if we have a meeting on the next day, it'd have to be a special meeting?
Yes, if you wanted to have a meeting on a Thursday, it would have to be a special meeting. It wouldn't be a regular meeting.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just for right now, you still got a couple, you still got a month, so we'll, for right now.
It's fine.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank, thank you, everyone, so that we could start sending message out on the closure.
That's not gonna be on the day, right?
Yeah, no, thank you, everyone. Okay, that, I think that, those are all my items.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. Since we're talking about November, are we gonna be meeting on November twenty fifth? It's two days before Thanksgiving.
Well, we didn't address that? I thought we addressed it right now.
No, that's November.
No, we didn't. We addressed the first meeting in November.
I'm okay attending, but I don't know.
See, I don't even wanna be here.
Because usually we, we do not have a, we don't have a meeting on that.
Thanksgiving holiday.
Thanksgiving week.
Can we set that as another agenda item? Cause.
For the next meeting? Okay.
Yes, because the description of this particular item is dealing with December and January holidays.
Okay, we'll, we'll put it, bring it back for an item.
Okay, okay, Von, just put a discussion item under my discussion item for the twenty third.
Just repeat your directive during.
You got it.
Your, your report.
I got it, but clarity is, do we wanna put Veterans Day, or, yeah, Veterans Day on there also as discussion or just the twenty fifth meeting?
That, that is by a code, so we don't need to.
I understand that, but were we meeting on Wednesday or a special meeting on Thursday?
That can be discussed later on. Actually, the chair can decide whether we're gonna have a special meeting or not.
We'll figure it out, guys, let's not take away too much time for the rest of the meeting. But thank you for considerations. All right. So. Have, have we, have we traditionally not had that day? And then we can stay consistent. Our reports from our elected officials, the city treasurer, censors of records, she'll be giving us a report next time. City clerk's office?
No report.
No report. Councilwoman Fay Johnson, please.
Thank you. I just wanna let everybody know that I apologize for missing last council meeting and for also missing the state of the city. I heard it was outstanding. I saw that it was outstanding. The staff did a great job putting that together, but I was in the middle of taking my daughter to college, so that, I had to get that taken care of. But I am very sorry that I missed it. Thank you, Councilmember Manning and staff for getting such a large grant for Holly Park Restrooms. That's gonna be really nice. And welcome to our two new businesses in, in the city that came up this evening. Also, I wanted to ask the city attorney, I was looking over the meeting from last, last time that I missed, and it was discussed about destruction of files in the city clerk's office. Do we have a standard operating procedure or anything in place that tells us how this is done?
Well, I believe the resolution, the, the procedures that we take to destroy records is, there's a retention schedule under Resolution Number seventy one seventy that was approved by council, I forget, a few decades ago. We still follow the protocol under that resolution. There are forms for listing the particular records that you want destroyed. Most of the retention schedule requires these records to be downloaded before destruction. So you have a digital file saved before you actually destroyed the hard copy documents. The forms that is attached to that resolution has procedures listing which records will be destroyed. And then afterwards, there's a certification that these were actually in fact destroyed.
And I, I did see that list, but it was hard to see, I couldn't tell on the list, are these documents being destroyed or are they being digitized and then destroyed? Or were they being digitized and kept?
So most of the records in the retention schedule, when I checked, last time I checked that, it's, most of them require you to download it and have it digitized before you destroy. So there'll be a code on the retention schedule that, that will be awarded so that you would download it, the document, scan and download, and then you could have the papers destroyed. And the reason for that is we have a lot of old files and records, including at the basement, and that's just way too old, it's taking away too much space. So for our office, it's been several years since we had this done, but we're still in the process of gathering which files are gonna be destroyed. It has to be, most, most documents for us is two years retention, but it does require digitization of the documents that you're gonna destroy.
Okay. Is it possible on the exhibit, when that's presented to us, to, to vote on the resolution that it, it outlines which ones are just being destroyed and then which ones are gonna be digitized and kept?
What I can do is I could show you the codes on the retention schedule.
Yeah, I, I saw that too, but it's a lot of back and forth. It, it's not real clear on the exhibit because you have to go back and forth to see what's being done. Because I know in the, in the state code, we're not allowed to get rid of minutes or resolutions, anything like that. So I'm, I'm just, I just wanna make sure that that's not being done.
I'll, I'll double check.
Okay.
And report to you.
Thank you. And then for Chief Tomatomi and your staff, thank you guys very much for, he's not here. Yes, there he is, hiding. I see the top of the head. Thank you very much for the improving of the Crenshaw Boulevard with the signal improving and the intersection project. Great idea, great vision to get prepared for the Olympics. Also, I wanna give you kudos for the MOU that you have with Hermosa Beach. That's a, that's very good for us. It expands our capability and also gets them some training too, so hats off to that. And kudos to Councilmember Montero for your Hawthorne Presidential Council of eighty five hundred dollars going to the K nine unit at the police department. That's very good. And then again, it's already been said, but I'd like to say it that I appreciate what you're doing, Robert, our city attorney, how hard you're working to get that mall taken care of. And I know the community has been up in arms and frustrated and complaining, and you gave us a purpose. You know, you said, put it in writing and give it to me and I'll do something with it. And we, we all did it. You know, we, we wrote our letters and our complaints about what our life is like around the mall, not thinking that anything was gonna be done. And in less than a year, we now have a permanent injunction and something will be done. And that's one hundred percent accredited to you and your staff and your tenacity. And I really appreciate that because that's in my neighborhood, so.
Thank you. And I appreciate the community that we received over one hundred fifty four declaration in support of our motion. And that's, I think it was a factor, a primary factor in how the court ruled on that case.
And, and I appreciate that. And I mean, I think it's key to show that it, it's one thing to come up and complain at the podium and to make phone calls and complain. It's another to put it in writing, put it in three one one, so we can track these things. We have no way of tracking things. If you can't, if you can't measure it, you can't track it, you can't manage it. And that's why the three one one app is so important. And I mean, your instance with the mall, all of those letters really helped. I mean, we, we can't really show all the videos to the, to the judge and say, here, this is the community complaining. It's gotta be in writing. It's gotta be in, in a form that we can actually track and trend so we can answer to our community. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy that the community stepped up and did that. I know my family participated in that because I get my nails done, you know, right across the street and it's like so frustrating. It's hard to get into Popeye's Chicken too. I like their chicken. But thank you, to you and your staff. I appreciate you very much. And then just a shout out to Kimberly Mack and her team for the ribbon, ribbon cutting that we did today. It was so beautiful, looking at what it looked like before and what it is now. It's really nice to see the beginning and the end and great vision on your part and your team, and, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. And then a couple of things, I'm also excited to see that we're soon gonna have merch online and maybe even a farmer's market. I mean, these are really good steps in the right direction for the city. I, like I say, Hawthorne is number one, and every day we're getting closer and closer to making sure we dominate in this area, and I really appreciate you guys. So thank you.
All right. Okay. Councilwoman Katrina Manning, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Put on my glasses. All right, so I wanna first say thank you so much to everybody. I know that our, our staff, we work really, you guys work really, really hard to make us look good out there in the community. And being here, being a part of this facade program that we have, I took some time to talk to the owners and they just talked about after the facade program being installed, that they've had an influx of customers. And one of the guys at Mr. Potato talked about, he did a, a post and he got three hundred thousand views for his place of business. And so they are just so excited of the influx of folks coming. So that tells me that that work that we did, it worked. It made a huge difference. So I'm excited. Kimberly Mack and her team, thank you so much for your work under the leadership of our city manager. But she also talked about, we also have one coming up. And I'm really looking forward to that because the success we had of this one just means that we're gonna continue to have more success on our corridors. And as you know, this has been an important matter in our city, making sure that our corridors is bringing in business, bringing in folks that's coming through other cities to pass our city. So it makes me so proud to be able to say our city is doing these kinda works, these facade programs, because it does make a difference. Not only does it make a difference, but it also means that, that, that the businesses know that we appreciate them and appreciate their partnership. And that's really important because it shows that we're committed to making sure that we are there, not only. that we are there not only for our residents, but for our businesses too. So thank you all who worked on that project as well. I also want to talk about, I don't know if you guys remember, but I did a book drive some months ago and I did a partnership with the carpenters to do the book exchange. So I can't remember off the top of my head exactly how many books that we got, but I will say this past week, part of that was to deliver those books to the folks in Pasadena that lost their books, their school because of the fires. And so our city basically went out there and we donated them books. So they are very, very, very appreciative of City of Hawthorne for donating those books. I think I donated at least like 125 books, used, gently used, and new books. So that's been very successful. I'm so excited about being able to do that. And let me just say that in today's world, where folks are always on social media, to see those kids' eyes light up, to be able to touch a real actual book, it felt so good because you assume, or at least, I'm sorry, I assume that kids want to actually be on social media reading as opposed to reading actual books. But they were super, super excited and grateful to be receiving those books. So very, very excited to continue to get books. But I will say that if you want to donate books, if you could please send me Spanish books because I was short on having enough Spanish books to provide to the kids. So if you decide to donate, please donate some Spanish books, thank you. Also, I had an opportunity to attend Hawthorne 24 Hour Fitness. They had a block party because they renovated their gym. So if you are in the area, you should really go take a look at their gym. They're doing a lot of community events. They're asking businesses to come and be a vendor once a month at their establishment to try to engage the community as well as other businesses. But I had a great time, my daughter and I, I didn't get a chance to work out, but it was great. So I encourage you to go check out the 24 Hour Fitness on Crenshaw and 120th. That gym looks amazing, amazing. The other thing that I wanted to mention is I had an opportunity to go to Ramona Back to School Night. The engagement at that school is amazing. I tell you, it must have been 400 kids with their parents at Ramona Back to School Night. They really do show up for their community. I had a great time out there giving away books. And then I also had a chance to go to Hawthorne Middle School Backpack Giveaway with my fellow colleague, Mayor Proten Montero, and also Pat Donaldson, the chamber, the school board president, Mark McCarrion.
Brian McCarrion.
Brian McCarrion.
And it was at the Comblum Elementary School.
Okay, thank you for that correction. And then lastly, I wanted to say that I am super, super proud, where is it? To say the state of the city, if you wasn't there, you really missed out. Staff really did a wonderful job, they outdid theirselves. The ambiance of the pool, I mean, the night was, I thought I was like at a rare carpet Grammy Award event. They did a fabulous job. I have to say that that night was spectacular. I feel like it's the best state of the city that we have had in decades. Kudos to staff, kudos to everybody that made that night happen again. It was amazing. And like I said, I felt like I was either at the Oscars or the Grammy because they did an amazing job. And honestly, I feel like we need to do more to let more folks know about our state of the city because every, I feel like people would be on trees trying to get into this event if they knew how nice it was, so.
Or in the pool.
Or in the pool. I mean, we had lights in the pool. I mean, it was just a band, it was just so, oh, the lighting was just amazing. I can go on and on and on, I know my time is up, but I just want to say, you guys outdid yourself for the state of the city. And I'm so proud, so proud of what we've been able to accomplish. The mayor, and I'm taking away his kudo time, but the mayor did an awesome job and staff, letting folks know what's ahead, what we've been able to do. And I'm just so proud to be a councilwoman for the City of Hawthorne because of all the wonderful things we got. I mean, just imagine the projects that we have coming. But let's even think about the projects that we're currently working on right now. And I'm just, this is an exciting time for the City of Hawthorne, and I'm just very blessed to be a part of this historical moment of all of these things that we're having. And I also have bragging rights when I go to other cities to let them know that we are really making a difference in the City of Hawthorne and in South Bay. Thank you.
Let's give a round of applause to staff.
Yes, staff! Yes!
Vaughn, Vaughn, Vaughn! Vaughn, come on. It'll be my turn soon. It was hardcore, but yeah, thank you. Any go-bags over here? No? Okay. Councilwoman, Angie Reyes English?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, there's a couple of events coming up. I'll leave that one for the mayor to speak on. We have Saturday, October 25th, our Halloween Spectacular Carnival. That's an annual event over at our memorial center. Let's see, what else is there, real quick? A couple of highlights. I just want to take a moment to thank our city manager with regards to the recent press release that came out regarding the Hawthorne Mall. I don't know if folks had a chance to see that, but I do believe it's very important that folks know exactly what is happening at the mall. The press release is very important, I actually want to read it. Can I read the press release? Is that okay? I think, because we have a great opportunity with YouTube and folks that watch. Hawthorne, California, September 9th, 2025. The City of Hawthorne has obtained a permanent court injunction requiring the owners of the long vacant Hawthorne Mall to move forward with redevelopment or demolishment no later than August 31st, 2026. The order follows a nuisance abatement action brought by the city after years of inaction by the property's owners, the Charles Company and its affiliate M&amp;A Gabay. The injunction mandates that the owners secure the property, conduct structural and asbestos testing, install fencing to prevent trespassing, provide daily cleanup, daily cleanup, and maintain onsite security. If the owner fails to meet the August 26th, 2026 deadline, the city will request the appointment of a receiver who would assume control of the property on behalf of the court and determine its deposition. The mall, which has sat vacant for more than two decades, has been a resource of ongoing community concerns due to trespassing, graffiti, trash, and safety issues. Redevelopment of the site is considered critical to the economy recovery of the city's downtown and will also provide relief to surrounding neighborhoods. The city appreciates the numerous community members who stepped forward to voice their concerns over the years, said our attorney, Robert Kim. We were able to present those complaints to the court to show just how negative of impacts the mall has had to ensure we could get relief. And I am so appreciative of the press relief. I'm so appreciative of the efforts of the city attorney's office. Again, this has been an effort that has been a thorn in our side and it's just great to know that finally, we're going to get some relief here. And I need to commend the community as well, and that's why it was important for me to read the press release. So to those that provided information to assist us, thank you. It made a difference. Yes. And while I'm on that topic, I also want to provide our, a summary of our service requests submitted through the city's My311 app over the past 90 days. This is also important, it highlights the key categories included, which were illegal dumping, noise complaints, and graffiti. As you know, there's a My311 app that was launched to provide residents with a convenient way to report issues directly to the city staff. Since its implementation, the app has proven to be a valuable tool for improving responsiveness, tracking trends, and ensuring greater accountability across departments. The latest data continues to demonstrate how residents are actively using the platform to engage with city services and to improve the quality of life in our community. And just to give you an idea, it's attached with the locations of the requests that are being made in our city. The highest percentage of over 56% is illegal dumping. And that includes bulky items, trash, and debris. Other is other miscellaneous concerns, but graffiti is another third. Noise complaint fourth, the upkeep of properties, that's again, like the Hawthorne Mall, the nuisance properties, things like this. That was another reported My311. Traffic concerns is another. Homeless concerns, sidewalks, city park concerns, potholes, tree trimming, inappropriate, inoperable, excuse me, inoperable vehicles on private property. That's another nuisance. Unknown substance, drainage, unlicensed businesses, and illegal construction. All of this is very important to the City of Hawthorne. And I know I stand on one accord, if you want to do business with the City of Hawthorne, do it right. Get your permits and do what you need to do, but don't try to cut corners, it's not going to happen. And I'm so grateful to our code enforcement that is working on the weekends and assuring that these types of calls are being addressed. And I'm sure the mayor could appreciate that too. Long ago, when he talked about garage conversions and things like this, this is not the way to live. And I'm all 100% to assure that we're doing things the right way. I also want to speak a little bit with regards to Republic Services. And I think there's a collective effort here to address the many concerns that constituents are contacting us on a regular basis to make complaints with regards to Republic Services. And I'm right there with you. I did this type of work with regards to reporting out the types of things that I'm seeing and taking pictures of it so that I could assure what I'm reporting and how quickly it's being retrieved, picked up, taken away. This includes bulky items, trash, and debris, and things that they're responsible for, okay? We have our department, which is Public Works, and the Public Works staff that goes out of their way to pick up bulky items and things like this that is being reported by My311 or other ways. And we only have so much staff that is able to do that. And every day, they're out there picking up what is being called in. However, we have a contract with Republic Services for those types of services too. So I want to make sure that Republic Services is keeping up with their contract to pick up bulky items, trash, and debris, and to take it away. And from what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, it's not happening. And so I want to make sure that residents know first to contact Republic Services with regards to their concerns, with regards to their service-related billing, any requests that they may have. This approach assures that they're receiving the quickest response and resolution. It's really unfair that the city is constantly being contacted for a Republic Services matter. That's not fair. Republic Services has to respond. So I'm directing and asking constituents and those out there to contact Republic Services directly, either through their website, which is my.republicservices.com, and sign up. And there's also republicservices.com, contact us, chat with us. And this is a way for you to directly speak with Republic Services on your matter. Now, if there's ongoing persistent issues that continue and you have logged those problems that are not resolved, then you may contact the city. But you have to be able to work with the Republic Services first. Don't call us, work with Republic Services first. And then, if anything, it's not being resolved and you have dates and times of matters that you've called into Republic Services that have not been taken care of, then you may contact the city and provide us that information so that we could handle that matter efficiently and quickly. But there's a process for everything, and I ask that you follow that process. And there's also, a residence can manage services online. There's, this is going to be posted to our website, it's available. It provides a 24/7 access to Republic Services. It gives you many ways of how you can track. You can see your schedule, you can get real-time services alert, manage your preference, and schedule services. It's very important, again, that you work with Republic Services to get your trash picked up. And I have to commend also, under that same breath, our workforce, our public works, the workforce that is out there every day, that I'm seeing on every street, picking up the bulky items, you know, we've got anything from couches, mattresses. We've got tables, desks, lamps, clothing. I could go on and on and on and on. And this is not the way to live or have a quality of life when you see this filth on our streets. And I also want to bring an education component to the residents of Hawthorne. There is a way to have your items picked up. Just work with My311, make a request, and when you schedule your pickup, take your item out and it'll be picked up. Try not to leave it there all week long, assuming it's going to get picked up. And I can't say enough, we only have so much staff in Public Works doing this, so it's important. I also want to, real quickly, I know that took up a lot of my time, but hey, I'm seeing it every day, every day. Our Senior Resource Fair coming up Friday, October 10th, look for that, 10 to 1 here at Hawthorne City Hall. Look forward to that. For everyone, the 9/11 Remembers Ceremony, which is Thursday, September 11th, here at City Hall at 8:30 a.m. I just want to thank again the Holly Park Renovation Project for our city employees that assisted in that and was able to get a grant. Thank you again to you, and kudos to all staff that assisted in those efforts. I also want to thank Vaughn and our city departments in housing and everyone over there for the Crenshaw Village grand opening. It's great, it's great, and folks are definitely coming to those stores because of how great it looks and how clean it is. To the Chamber of Commerce, Pat Donaldson, September 29th Golf Tournament, kudos on their efforts there. To the new businesses, which included the Detail Services from Michael Diaz to Deanna, the IA certified consultant regarding AI efforts, I guess, as a consultant, right? I mean, it's like making its rounds. Let's see. With regards to the gentleman that came and spoke earlier today on a police matter, Vaughn, Chief of Police, let's schedule a discussion on that, please. I'm available. With regards to, let's see. Good neighbors, Good Neighbors United. Thank you for coming out. Thank you again for your advocacy, and you're absolutely right. The Supreme justices, not all, but some, failed us, and it's very unfortunate. I'm guilty for being brown, right? I'm guilty for hablando en español, wow. That's what it is. But we're going to continue to fight, we're going to continue to... We're going to continue to assure that folks are safe. And I want to circle back to the food giveaway, what you guys discussed. Dana asked me to just provide some words. It's not that she doesn't want to, it's that folks don't feel safe. And that's reasonable. She's more than happy to entertain a food giveaway when things slow down and things get a little bit better. I don't know when that's going to be, but the efforts are always there with Dana. She's a great person and providing community assistance when she can. And we just need to pause a bit. But yeah, absolutely. Going to keep pushing on that, and you've got my support, including with regards to, you know, the arts and things like this that we're all into. I'm all for the arts. I would love to see Vaughn, some arts go up in some of our new buildings that are coming. You know, maybe the Public Works Department or even maybe our senior center, where we could showcase a community through the arts with a mural. I think that would be amazing. I just want to commend Sergeant Espinoza, if he's sergeant, I want to make sure he's a sergeant, yeah, for the efforts with regarding to addressing our homeless population, our homeless community. I think we've made great strides throughout the years, and we're doing a lot better. And at least we're addressing it. There was years in the past, prior administrations, it was never addressed. So we've come a long way. And then, just wrapping things up. I just want to let folks know, if there's ever an item up here with regards to a handicap designation at any location, anybody with a blue handicap plate card or a red one could use that space. It's not just dedicated to that address, okay? Anybody could use it. It's just not for that address. It's just giving an address for, you know, specifications as to where it's going to be placed. But anyone that has a handicap plate card can use it, anyone. I really still want to address some of the storefronts, Vaughn. I've been driving up and down the boulevard, and there's still some, you know, closures to some of the stores with boards. And you can't see the addresses because all the trees on the boulevard are overgrown. If we can somehow cut back some of those trees, it seems like it's been a long time coming. Can't make out the address, can't make out like what it used to be, the name of the business to provide that, but addressing some of those is important. And then, at some point, I'd like to get together, Vaughn, with you and Public Works to discuss Republic Services. And this is an internal discussion. Thank you.
Mayor Proten, Alex Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. Thank you for listening at home. Thank you for the all head departments and the staff for keeping this city, you know, up and moving forward. I appreciate all of the effort. I'm not going to repeat all the stuff that my colleagues have said. Thank you, thank you. So I thank you to all and kudos to all that happened. But today, yes, was very special, the Crenshaw Village, the grand open. Thank you, Kimberly. Thank you, Vaughn. Fastade improvements is one of the things that makes cities look good and better and economic prosperity, so we'll continue to do that. So thank you for that. Let me just say, I'm not going to talk about the mall, but let me say that this process is not just one year. It starts in 2019 about filing the court papers against the Gabei and the owners. So 21 it started, but that is where, when I became council member, you remember, we changed leadership. We changed leadership at the attorney's office and also at city manager's office because nothing was done to bring the mall into the eye of what it needs to be done. So again, we thank Robert King and his team and Mr. Vaughn Norris for all you guys have done to bring this mall into what it is right now. And this injunction is a warning for other developers out there that have properties in this city that has not been developed, that we're going to go after you next. Okay? Also, yeah, because, you know, we see some other develop happen. Look at over here in El Segundo, the nursery. They bought the property, and now we see the townhomes coming. So why not? Other places are not doing it. So we need to make sure that these other developers have take notes. One thing that, Mr. Mayor, I did attend on your behalf, I went to the Ego Day Festival, the Nigerian festival in Carson at the Veterans Memorial Park, and it was about 5,000 Nigerians there. So even they said that they would love to do it next year in Hawthorne, but the traffic will be a nightmare because it was about 10,000 cars. So just think about that. Yeah. So I want to ask you, all my colleagues, as I mentioned, the Prime Minister of Cabo Verde is coming on September 22nd. We're having a dinner. And then, on the 23rd, at 10 a.m., he's going to the SpaceX. And I'm trying to see if he can stay for the hour of city council on the 23rd of September at 6 o'clock. Okay? But if his schedule does not permit for him to stay until 6 p.m., I just wanted to ask you if I can put all your name on the proclamation that I'm going to give it to him. So because his schedule is very, you know, stringent because he has to go to the United Nations to give a speech in UN, and also he's going to Texas for some business opportunities. But he'll be here on the 22nd, and then we, the K-11 Association is going to have a dinner with him. And then, the morning on Tuesday, the 23rd, he's going to be at SpaceX, and I'm going to try to get there with him. But I would like to give him proclamation with the Prime Minister and the ambassador and another gentleman, so that's coming part of his entourage, per se, okay? So the other thing to keep in mind, on October 15, there will be a Hawthorne Housing Fair Workshop. The Fair Housing Foundation is having a Hawthorne Fair Housing Workshop Wednesday, October 15, from 2 to 4, to talk about your tenants and landlord and responsibilities and your rights, okay? And our Hawthorne Teen Center is going to celebrate 17-year anniversary on Wednesday, November 5th, from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. Of course, the Teen Center is right there on 3901 West El Segundo Boulevard. And also, put on your calendar, the Hawthorne President's Council Community Barbecue Dinner is on October 16 at 5:00 p.m. at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. And again, I want to commend everyone that's been working very hard for the city. And as we celebrate, you know, the month of September, the Hispanic Heritage Month, the September 11, and also the 3rd, and make sure that you are prepared. So all those things are good. And again, we want to congratulate everyone. And we know that officially, the chief has said he's going to retire on December 31st. So we want to say congratulations to the Chief Tamatani, and you well deserve, you've been here for more than 30 years, and we'll give you all the goodies when time comes. But thank you for that. Ah, the other person that I sent an email, chief, and I got a reply, said, "I'm retired." Gloria, how come Gloria retired, now I say goodbye?
That was her choice, sir.
Oh, tell her that I miss her, okay? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's it. Good night.
Okay. I have a quick go back?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention that I will be in DC at the Black Legislative Caucus from September the 23rd to the 28th, so I won't be at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yeah. I guess when any of us go to a conference, just make sure, try to bring us back some information, give us a general idea of what happened and everything. I think that's a good thing, right? All right. Anybody else?
Yeah.
You got something else? Go ahead.
I'm going to be attending LAFCO Annual Conference. Last year was in Yosemite, and that was great. But I'm going to be, Montero, in San Diego from the 21st through the 24th, so I'm going to miss, sorry, I would love to have seen him and said, but do you have my okay to give him my signature on the proclamation?
Yeah, mine's too.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
And also, I did, Vaughn, we all received with regards to our chiefs, you know, leaving us. But I also want to commend Captain Lane, who's going to come right behind him. So thank you and congratulations to both.
Good. All right. Everybody good? All right, thank you, guys. So I have a few things, so I'm just kind of go as efficiently through these. I do agree, we need to make sure that everybody does, whoever applies to do business here in Hawthorne, does not cut corners, okay? You need to meet the requirements that the city has laid out. All the business who apply for building plans and planning, there's a reason why we have these rules and these regulations on how to build your property and how to lay things out. It's for the safety of your residents. Because at the end, if you cut corners, it's not, it's people who could get hurt. We're not just doing it just because we want to make life difficult for you, and you guys know it. You just want to cut corners sometimes and save money and come and whine and tell us, like, why do we have to do this? Why do you kind of try to go through us? And we, as elected officials, will always stand by our city staff. So just know that city staff that will support you, okay? So yeah, keep on enforcing stuff, right? Yeah, I mean, it's important. This has happened to me recently and, you know, whatever, right? St. Joseph is going to be having their fiesta soon, so they're going to be talking to the city, hopefully, you know, very soon, just to get those fine touches. Everybody here is invited to go to the opening ceremony on Friday. So they'll be reaching out to everybody here. I got to double check, but I think it's going to be the first week in October, so you still have time. It's not going to be at the end of September, so it'll be in the first week in October. They shifted it over. The North Hawthorne had their picnic this past, like, I think it's last weekend, and they had about 300 people there, probably even more, 350, possibly even 400 in and out. So it was a great success. They had a lot of games and a lot of, I don't know what else they had over there, but, you know. Well, I did go, and good food, picnic, good company. The children were happy. They gave away raffle tickets so that the kids could win prizes, and it was really fun. So I was really, it was really good. So congrats to the North Hawthorne group for having that event. The Spider-Man was there. I think you attended, sir, right? Members of the council were there, our captains were there. And Chief, did you stop by? I think you kind of, no, you were riding on your e-bike. You drove, right? No, he, yeah. So I'll be going to the Nalewa event the third week of this month. Why do I throw stuff in there like that? So I'll be going to the Nalewa event in El Paso. The one for me? My El Paso event? I think it's the, it's an emergency preparedness event in El Paso. I'm going to be going on the 25th, 26th. Okay? You might be.
Oh, October.
Yeah, of September for the Nalewa event.
Oh, September.
Yeah. So, so.
So when is our council meeting? The 22nd?
Yeah.
Oh, 23rd, okay.
So, Mr. Robert Kim, I've been getting calls about some noise, not just noise from venues or from locations, but I've also been getting noise from people complaining about leaf blowers and all these different things, okay? And, you know, most recently out of, you know, a location as well. So I think you guys are still working on that. Could you provide us with the information that tells us so we can speak intelligently about this when we're contacted by individuals as to what the rules and regulations are on enforcing that? Could you do that for us?
We'll do.
Do you think that, do you think that should be in a pink paper format or just a memo?
I believe I provided a legal confidential on this previously.
So just pull it up and revive it.
Yeah, I'll look for it.
Yeah, of the hours, that's all going to be included, like, so it should have the hours, you know, what's, what kind of sound decimal levels, et cetera, enforcement procedures, if you can include that, please.
Got it.
So that'll be my first, what is it called? Request? What do you call this?
Directive.
Yeah, directive, yeah, yeah, I remember. Chief and staff, you guys were looking into this e-bike thing that we talked about, and there was a concern about that. I guess I brought it up. There was equal concern, talking about the enforcement aspect and the pub PSA type of approach, making sure we inform the community, just let them know you can't do this, possibly preceding like an enforcement effort. So ample time so that people can know what's allowed and what's not. So I know you're still working on that. You kind of, just on the side, you told me a little bit that you found some stuff. You didn't really tell me what it was. You found some data that supports maybe doing something of significance with regards to this. So you're still working on that. When you're ready, just let us know. Is that okay?
Sir.
Thank you, sir. Today, I did hear something about code enforcement and the 311 app. You know how you kind of listed all those different things that you did about all the things that are coming in through our 311 app? So we have data that's coming out of that. How many different calls for, you know, overgrown weeds, calls, you know, how, we could break it up like that. The code enforcement aspect, we could group all those things. We could report it up through the app. We need to turn to the app. If there's people out there that are asking us to, you know, hey, we got this problem, do something about it. No? I always refer people to the 311 app because then, you know, that's the way we're going to hold, we're going to hold ourselves accountable that we addressed it. That's the way we, that's our quality control method. So I think we all know that. At this point, hopefully, everybody's here referring everybody. Because we could easily write me an email and I'll forward it to staff, et cetera. We could go through that whole process, which takes a while. And at that point, people are unhappy. There's like, sometimes the emails get lost in the multitude of things that go through. But with the 311 app, the calls go for like, whatever it is, sidewalks, traffic, whatever the heck you see out there, calls for, you know, loud noise or whatever it is. So make sure, residents, you guys use the 311 app so we can have some data. But on that same token, I would like to put this on as an action discussion item. I don't really have the, but what I heard today was a good report on information coming out of the 311 app data that could possibly replace that code enforcement report we always get. So I think it's, what do you call it, repetitive information that's, I think it's extra work that we're having some members of our staff do when we can get the same information from the code enforcement, from the 311 app data. So I just want to put that on for a discussion. Is that okay, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
No, but it's, I mean, we got to streamline things. We got, remember, we said we want to make sure that we have our staff kind of addressing certain things, right? And not being taken away from stuff. So, all right, the state of the city was great. It was good. It was great. It was excellent. It was, I agree, the best. And so I really want to thank, first of all, and most importantly, Mr. Vaughn Norris, our city manager, for assembling such a great team of people here in the city. And the great, you know what? You know why it was like a great success is because, you know, this is your city. We want to display it. We want to, we want to show off our city. We want to show off all our success. And when staff, I was hands-off, guys. You can ask them. I was hands-off. You make this what you want to make this, guys. Make it, envision it and put it, you know, and build it and just do it however you guys want. And what they did, and you guys saw, was beautiful, right? I mean, look at this picture. I mean, yes, you're missing, right? But where is it? Look, it was classy, it was like really beautiful. Can we just do another one with this and put up? Somebody should have been holding like a little copy of her face over here, like, hey, here.
I actually said, can I get photoshopped in there? That looks so good.
And it was a great event, so thank you, Vaughn, and your staff, our staff, for doing And it was a great event, so thank you Vaughn and your staff, our staff, for doing that.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible to have staff that actually participate?
Yeah, where are they? Yeah, they're behind me. Are they here? Can you guys, can you guys stand up at least for right now?
If you're on the committee.
Can you name them, please?
Please stand up.
Oh, it's women power, yeah. No, ladies, thank you and gents, I think there were, of course, Eric too was part of that group to make that happen. The audition, the text, it was beautiful.
It was a team effort, thank you.
Team effort. And what was so unique about this State of the City is that I didn't do all the talking. We had department heads talking about their department through the video. But they were talking and talking about their departments and all the great things. And it was just, the production was great, everything sounds great. Food's great too, right? The lemonade and the punch was good too, right? For some of you guys. It was just a happy moment, guys. It was just a happy moment. It was just classy event, you know, hors d'oeuvres, cocktails, et cetera. It was just fun, so. The music was great, so we're proud to be residents of Hawthorne and elected official leaders, like you said. And I think, I just want to extend, I take all of the council members up here. We're all moving, like I said, you know, I might be delivering the speech, but everybody here is rowing the boat together, okay? So I do want to extend, like, I don't want to say olive branch, but to all of you, some who maybe I've, we just, we need to reconnect fully, so, right? If you know what I mean, we could have talks and we just want to come together and just solidify what we have up here. Because we got a good deal, we're working really well. Okay? And everybody.
Is it time for us to hug now? Is it time for us to hug now?
Yeah, if you want, come over here. No, but the big is, why? Well, I mean, that kind of leads to the next thing I wanted to talk about, was this Hawthorne Mall situation. You know, we've all felt the pain and disappointment that the ownership over there has given us. And it's been lasting since 2009, since 2009 this has been, why aren't you doing anything with the mall? Why don't you do the, somebody owns it and they're just not giving way. So we kept pressing, even with our previous leadership as well. But I agree, not to the extent and the degree that we had with, that we had with Robert and with Vaughn at the helm. And, well, yeah, well.
Robert got the magic touch.
Yeah. But I always said, you know, what did I call you? The bulldog of Hawthorne. I mean, this is, this requires bulldog status to be able to make this happen, man. Okay, so thank you so much. You know, sometimes we, there's a method to how you do things, you know? You might not smile a lot, but you know. Disappointment after disappointment. And when I hear mediation between us and him, no, that's how we, we're already way past that. There's no more need for any of that. There's no more need for any mediation, guys. We've already been that. To the point that this judge said, I'm going to step in. I'm going to make an injunction. This is what this person has to do. And proof of why there's no more mediation, there shouldn't be any more mediation, there shouldn't be anything, is how he took and fooled us for, since I started at least, 2009, to the point at which we decided that we're going to do, take formal effort to sue in court. I have six plans that this gentleman took, that Charles Company took us through. Six plans, separate plans, where they tried to, you know, they tried to delay, delay, delay. Plan number one, okay? I keep this in my office, just for a moment like this, I kept them in there. Plan number two. Imagine, plan number two. Oh yeah, we're going to do something, then they don't do anything. Plan number three. I don't know, whatever, however long this takes, so just so you can feel it. Plan number four. Remember we talked about, Angie? Plan number five. Plan number six, the famous South Bay Outlet Mall where we went through this whole little frickin' show up here that we were signing, where we're doing this signing thing that, so it's just a joke, it was just Fox on his part. He had no intention of doing anything. It, we had the Hawthorne Downtown Specific Plan that we did in order to make sure that there were the guidelines for the development of the Hawthorne Mall was. What, hey, what to expect. We had the market study. The market study for the area that helped and assisted him or their group to be able to know what, you know, what the market could bear. We have the retail market analysis for that famous outlet mall that they were promising, promising. South Bay Outlet Mall, you guys see that? And there's probably one or two other ones that they told us and they held us up. Every single time, delaying and delaying and delaying. So when you tell me that there's going to be a mediation, what mediation is there? The judge already said and took and saw that this is BS, what we were going through, through your efforts. We were able to help him see that. Right now, what I showed you is proof enough. What other mediation is there? Another delay tactic so they could put us back past August of 20, August 2026? Oh, we're going to do this, but we just need a little bit more time. So what, we take ourselves out of what, out of what the judge said for them to do? So we X that out and then we just destroy everything that the judge said? We can't do that, guys. Let's not be dumb. You know? What, I'm already giving away our tactic or something?
No, I just want to clarify that there's no mediation on this.
There's nothing else. I don't want to hear that word. That came out of somebody's mouth today.
We just know, we just have a straight order, what Mr. Haney's duties are as a third-party neutral. He's supposed to oversee and make sure that these orders are being followed and that they are being done. So we have a meeting on Friday with Mr. Haney and staff, including Planning Department. And we're going to go over these orders again because there is parts to it and there are deadlines to it. And we want to make sure that they're being kept. So it's not a mediation. And believe me, we're not going to mediate anything at this point. We have an order, we have a very clear order.
Thank you for repeating that. It's just that when somebody comes here and talks about this without going directly to you guys, I become very concerned. Okay, maybe that was, maybe, whatever, revisiting that, taking a second look at it, maybe it would have been appropriate to approach it a different way. Through you and then you letting us know. Okay? This is such a sensitive topic that I want us all to get the information at the same time. Not to open up the lines of communication, but I don't want to have an advantage of talking to somebody and noticing stuff before my council colleagues. I don't think you guys want to have that. I think we should all be presented that information at the same time so we could all talk together. Nobody wants to, you know, what, two people already talked to the judge? And then we, nobody else could talk to them? It's like, come on.
Absolutely.
I'm very sensitive about this, if I came off, whatever, it's just very important. I got all these documents here that was just, so. Thank you to all residents for making that effort to back us up with that. Look at them all, look at all that stuff, it's a big pile. All right, on to nicer things. So, so right here, we're going to have the Touch a Truck Event on October 11th from 10:00 to 1:00. It's always been a great success. I think we had it, what, two times already? So it's going to be good. Everybody's and all my colleagues, just come in and say hi and just do your thing, right? Good opportunity for everybody to come. It gets, it got packed the last time, right? So whatever method to promote this, you did just follow the same recipe, I think it's going to be good. Ramona, where are the two parks that are going to be refurbished? Ramona and Eucalyptus?
Eucalyptus Park.
So those parks are gaining attention too, so. But yeah, I think, you know, we got a good thing going on here. Oh, just to show you how far the city has come, this is the last point. At the State of the City, we had, I don't want to give the person's name, we had a developer that has built some good stuff here, but he's always been in an adversarial relationship with the city. I'll smile, right? Was at the event and he was impressed and happy and just saw the change that we, you guys know who it is, right? Came, was happy, was all, you know, eating hors d'oeuvres, you know, toasting or whatever. He was happy to be there, taking pictures, hugging people. It's just a different kind of, just a different thing we have going on in the city of Hawthorne where we're doing some great things. And the business community is happy, the residents are happy, and so we're on the right path. So thank you, guys. That ends the meeting today at 8:17, the meetings adjourned.